And that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Reminder, so everybody knows, we're here for what is best to promote and encourage achievement for every student in our district. And at this moment, Ms. Mary Lou Martinez will do our invocation.
Dear Lord, we ask that you guide the team's efforts tonight and that we all collaborate and keep our focus on the children of this district. I pray for Thanksgiving for all. We all come together when it is most important and we do what is best for children. I ask for prayers for those who have personal emergencies tonight. I hope that everyone is safe and that we keep them close in our prayers. I ask all of this.
On to item three, communication from citizens. We appreciate you being here this evening, and we always welcome communications from citizens of our district. Individuals who wish to participate during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment shall sign up with the presiding officer or designate no later than 1:00 p.m. the day of the board meeting, and shall indicate the agenda, item, or topic on which they wish to address the board. Ms. Branch, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to the board tonight?
Yes, we do. We have Eric Cryle here to speak with you.
Individual comments to the board shall not exceed three minutes, just a reminder, and also board members age in discussion with citizens during a board meeting. In response to a citizen's comment, the board president may direct the superintendent to research items and report to the board at a later meeting. Thank you. Welcome.
Board Superintendent Smith Faulkner, good evening. Been here before, so hopefully you guys remember me. I'm here to speak about the TAD. And, you know, I'm pretty sure you guys are well aware of where I stand on everything. But in case you're not, quickly, I'm against the reappraisal plan as it's implemented, and we can go down that road for whatever reason. But I want to, I want to address something here real quick this evening. If you guys have been watching the TAD meetings, you know, there's a meeting this Wednesday, and then there was a meeting, and there was a motion made that didn't get a second to terminate the chief appraiser. So I just want to say that I would not be in favor of removing the chief appraiser at this point, based on all of currently available public information. They're in the middle of switching that software system over from Ammentum to True Prodigy, and I don't, I don't think you'd take the lead architect out at this time. So that's what I want to say about that. Now, the other thing I want to talk about is, I just want to talk about me real quick. I'm going to tell you a little story, and it's a story that I haven't told anybody. Last year, I was me that I wasn't going to have enough votes to be on that board. I started going around to different entities, and I started speaking on behalf of not me, but, you know, other people that I thought would be good candidates. So one of the smaller cities, and I told them, "Do not vote for me. Please, don't vote for me. It's just going to be a waste of time." No matter how much I tried to convince them, they still voted for me. They gave me all 11 of their votes. And after that meeting, I had a conversation with one of the council members, and she told me, she said, "The first time I ran for city council, didn't make it. Second time I ran for city council, didn't make it. Third time I ran for city council, I finally made it." And it stuck with me. And so, when it was all said and done last year, I thought, "What could I do to stay involved and, you know, try to effectuate difference being on this side of the dais?" And that's where I came up with the idea to go around and get these conservation this year. I read a section of the tax code, and I thought, "Well, this will give me something to doodle." And I sort of turned a hobby into like this quest to make a difference. And I think on some level, you know, the issue that that meeting was called for on Monday was because I was just going out trying to make a difference. But, you know, it shows I had tenacity, and that's one thing I promise you. If you do decide to throw some votes my way this evening, you're going to get a guy that I just don't quit. I just don't know how to quit. And so, that's all I got to say. I thank you all for your time. Have a great meeting.
Next to speak is Ms. Wendy Burgess.
Good evening. Thank you, first and all, for your dedication to the children and the families of Castleberry ISD. My name is Wendy Burgess. You've seen me here before. I had the honor of serving you on the Tarrant Appraisal District for seven years. And like yours, it's not a glamorous position, I promise you. There are darts being thrown all the time, and yours is not an easy job as well. And I know that because I've worked with you for seven years, down in the trenches. And I want to continue to do that, and I'll tell you why. I'm here not only as a board member, but as a fellow community member who cares deeply about fairness, accountability, and earning your trust. I dearly appreciate your nomination this year as well as last year, allowing me to continue working on your behalf on crucial items. Recently, noise going on and misinformation circulating around about our work and me personally. I want to make something very, very clear. My commitment has always been to people of Tarrant County. Make no mistake about that. And that proof is in my work, and that proof was in my vote on March 12th of this year, when I voted to go back to the annual reappraisal. That is my proof. So, other people can try to bring me down and say bad things about me, but I stand tall because I talk about myself. Every decision I have made has been guided by integrity and the desire to strengthen transparency in an organization. I too am against the firing of the chief appraiser. I want him to do things correctly, and I want him to follow code, and I want us to get better every single day, but we can only do that together. At our last meeting, the board voted to launch an independent investigation into the previous election, but we know it wouldn't have changed. But we can make it better in the future. That's the result. It is a step designed to build confidence the public knows the process is fair and above reproach. I support that fully because public trust matters more than politics. However, I'm concerned that it can easily be twisted in ugly ways. I certainly hope that I am wrong. We all should remain vigilant and watch for unpleasant truths. I stand for reappointment and ask for your full vote. To thank those that have supported me in the past and challenged me and made sure that I stood with you, and I will continue to stand with you, and I will be there every single meeting, the entity meetings, board meetings. Anytime you have a question, you call me. Your superintendent knows where I stand, and I stand with her in all of those meetings, and I stand with you as well. Thank you so much.
Last person to speak is Mr. Joe Bennett.
Daniel Bennett, I've been here probably eight, nine times in the past. I see Ms. Burgess and Mr. Cryle's here, defending their territory, apparently. I want to point something out to you. The other day, what with ISD almost forfeited its right to vote, and Sayed Asayed came in, saved the day, because they had back-to-back meetings. And because she did make that phone call, which Ms. Burgess didn't, neither did Mr. Cryle, they canceled the July 29th meeting, or July 29th, listen to me, their October 29th meeting, and rescheduled for November 4th. Securing their right to vote. And who did they give the votes to? You think they gave it to Ms. Sayed Asayed? Absolutely not. 108 votes went to Mr. Cryle, 108 votes went to Ms. Burgess, when they should have taken their votes and thrown them into the trash. Neither one of them called up with ISD to protect the citizens, protect the property owners, protect the board. Messiah did, and she didn't earn any of those votes. I'm asking you to rectify that situation. Ms. Burgess was actually there, and she commented to me, "I was having a grandbaby." That's why I wasn't there in August, and then moved on. But she also said she supported the two-year plan. There's many other things that Ms. Burgess has done on that board that I think should disqualify her from serving. I have a list of them. I won't bore you with them in one minute. So it's, one of the biggest ones, in my estimation, was making sure that Catherine Law, the attorney for TAD, earning $32,370 a month, she agreed with that with no contract. That's not transparency. She's gone. I worked diligently to get rid of her. Ms. Burgess tried to give $1.3 million contract to Leinbarger for a homestead review contract. They were one of the bidders, but Tyler Technologies won the bid at staff recommendation for $380,000. She made the motion to give it to Leinbarger. She wasn't a voting member then, but she made the, she hooked in Catherine Wyom and Mr. Martinez, and fortunately, it got voted down. Those are just two. $380,000 homestead review contract or 1.3 million, it's not even in your packet. That's where she went. I could go on and on and on. I hope you'll consider Sayed Asayed protecting the citizens of Tarrant County. Thank you.
Ms. Faulkner, were there any questions called in regarding the consent agenda?
No, Board President.
Now move on to item five, presentation items, 5A.
Yes, at this time, we have Damon Cooper. He's here to present the 2425 Physical Year End Financial Audit and Management Letter.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for another year of allowing Henges-Esepp to be your school district auditor. I won't take up too much time of your time tonight as we go through the financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2025. If you have your report in front of you, we're just going to follow along to a few pages here. Going to jump right on into page three. I like to start here as this is our independent auditor's report. This is where we essentially provide our conclusion or overall opinion on how the audit went. If you skip down to the second paragraph there, you'll see that it states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. The respectation of the governmental activities each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of Castleberry Independent School District as of June 30th." In a long way of saying, "We're reporting an unmodified opinion, which is a clean audit, no findings in relation to the financial statements." We have a couple of other independent auditors' reports that I'll get to at the end of the package here. Want to stop and actually just take a moment to thank Mr. William Wooton, as well as Ms. Faulkner for all their assistance and help during this year's audit, the assistance and support that was provided was great, so I really do appreciate that. There is one item I want to mention on here before I move on to some financial highlights. There is a new emphasis of matter as it pertains to a change in accounting principle that we had to report and disclose for the financial statements this year. In June 2022, GAZB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, issued a new principal change that basically says for all, beginning effective December 15th, 2023, we are required to disclose a liability that has been recognized in the statement of net position for any carryforward compensated absences that are to be paid or used in the future. This item is included in the long-term debt portion of the financials, but I bring it up because it did result in a restatement of the prior year net position of about 1.7 million. Again, this, it didn't lot in any significant impact to that net position, but it is a disclosure that we had to do a restatement, given that that principle was in effect for December 15th, 2023 and going forward. So there's a lot more detail on that, and we'll get into all of the details, and you'll actually see that effect shown in the financial statements as well. With that said, I want to jump on over to page six, and we're going to go over just a few of the financial highlights for this year. On page six, this is our management discussion and analysis. You'll see the beginning top portion there is our main financial highlights. That first bullet is noting that we're reporting this year total net position of 57.7 million. This is an increase of about 4.4 million from the prior year financial statements. The third bullet there, we're going to note that the total district's governmental fund balance is coming in at a total of about 97.2 million. This is an overall increase from prior year balance of about 88 million. This is primarily due to the new bond issuance that were issued in fiscal year 2025. Approximately nine-point amount is your unassigned fund balance, coming in at about 8.9. That last bullet point, though, is your overall general fund balance. It's coming in at about 9.2 million. And this does, this does represent about a $3 million positive increase from prior year as a result of an increase in revenues over the adopted budget and a decrease in expenses from the adopted budget from that prior year. So overall, good news on that with the increase of overall net position as well as general fund balance and overall fund balance. Just to give you a financial snapshot on what that looks like, if you jump over to page 18 for me, this kind of lays out where those balances are coming from. We're going to start with the balance sheet of our fund balances and specifically looking at that first column, which is the general fund. You'll see towards the bottom there, the total fund balance is coming in at about 9.2. This is in, as opposed to the 6.1 million that came in in the prior year. On that next page, page 19, you'll see the total governmental fund column. Towards the bottom is that overall 97.2 million that we're reporting for the total fund balance of all governmental funds. Over on that, and we're going to skip over to page 22, and this is going to be your fund level income statement. In that first column is the general fund again, we're going to focus on, and at the top, you'll see total revenues are coming in at about 47.4. This is an increase, as I noted, of about 2.8 million from the prior year. Towards the bottom there in the middle, you'll see total expenditures are coming in at about 44.3. And again, this is a decrease in spend of about 5 million from the prior year. So that results in that increase of 3.085 in the fund balance for the general fund. And overall, this is approximately about a $7 million swing from the reported negative 4.7 million that we reported last year. So the district did great in managing the revenues and expenses, spending a lot less, gaining a little bit more in revenues. With that said, we're just going to jump over to page 26, and this, again, just highlights what I've been saying. This is the, this is actual comparison for the general fund. To give you a little more detail on the increase or the exceeding of budget for overall revenues, at the top, you'll see in the actual amounts column, that's the 47.4 revenue that I just reported, in comparison to the final approved budgeted amount of revenues that was to be 45.9. So coming in a little over 1 million with the increase in revenues for that year. And then towards the bottom, you'll see the total expenditures, again, in that actual amount column, reporting at 44.3, and this is coming in about 1.6 million less than the final budgeted amount of expenditures that was to be 45.9. So again, reporting that ending balance in the actual amount column of 9.2 million in general fund balance for the year. So like I said, I won't hold you up too. I want to skip all the way back to page 85, and as I said, the first independent auditor's report was one of three reports that we issue within this package here. This second one here is over internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. I won't take you through all of the wording here, but in a nutshell, it's another clean audit report that we're issuing, unmodified with no findings. If you want to skip over to page 87, this would be our last actual audit report that we issue, and this is over the compliance for each major program and on internal controls over compliance required by the uniform guidance. In a nutshell, this represents our report over the single audit. This is a governmental required audit that we do for any school districts that exceed 750,000 in federal expenditures. And again, this is going to be reporting another clean audit with no findings. Before I give you the last page, I wanted to stop, when it comes to this single audit, to make note of an extension that the TEA currently has. Normally, this report would be approved by you guys tonight and signed, and then subsequently uploaded by us to the TEA. The TEA has issued an extension for all financial reports for the year ending 2025 due to two different things. One, they're having a upgrade in their audit application system to where we actually physically cannot upload the report until they're done with that upgrade, which they suspect in about January. Who knows if that can get delayed anymore or not? The second thing, which is more prevalent to you guys, is that for any districts that do require a single audit, the OMB or the Offices of Management and Budget, every year they release their compliance supplement. This has requirements in it for independent auditors to perform their single audit for school districts. The 2025 release has not been released yet, and therefore, TEA is not allowing for those school districts to upload and submit their single audit reports. The good thing about that is 99.7% sure that there's not going to be any major change in that new release that would require us to do anything to revamp the audit. It's more a technicality that it cannot be signed and uploaded to TEA before that release is out there. So we have that in our mind. We're monitoring it. Right now, they've extended the upload date to February 27th, so we got plenty of time to get this uploaded, but as of now, it is complete as is. We don't foresee any changes to this at all. It's more a matter of you guys not being physically able to sign it. Mr. Wooton and Ms. Faulkner will discuss with you guys as far as the next action is for us physically signing it. But it can be approved tonight, with the caveat that it just need to be physically signed later. What we will do is that we will monitor and keep Ms. Faulkner up to date on when that is released, and if, again, low risk at all, if it does require any changes and we do any significant change to the report, we'll discuss coming back and doing another presentation for you guys. All right? And that's going to do it for me. I did want to note that the district did very well this year with the audit. As you can see, a $7 million swing in that change of fund balance is a huge swing. We have a new bond issuance that added a lot of fund balance for the capital projects. From an audit perspective, last year, we were reporting about 38 audit adjustments that we needed to do versus just the five that we needed for this year. So it was a much cleaner data that to work with. We're reporting no issues. Page 90 is kind of our summary of all of the reports, noting that they're unmodified, clean audits, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. So, that's all I got. I'm open to answer any questions. Please let me know.
So, just to confirm, okay, you said it was a $7 million swing. So, two years ago, we were in the hole for three, what, 3.5? Okay, 4.7.
Yes. It was a decrease in the 2022-2023 fund balance of 4.7. Overall, fund balance was still at 6 million positive. It was just a decrease in that from that prior year. This year, the increase was 3 million to that 6 million. So overall, $7 million swing in the net change of fund balance. So, $6 million in fund balance to a $9 million in fund balances is a...
All a very good year.
Very good, absolutely.
Yes.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Exactly, that's always a good thing. It's always a great thing. So, I look forward to another year next year, and like I said, we'll keep you up to date on signing and approval and if any changes from there, and I thank you guys again.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So, Mr. Board President, what I wanted to say is, I know that we went through some attrition last year of 50 employees. We kept a high retention rate, and most of all, even making a $7 million swing, we maintained an overall B-rating, and I want to congratulate the people in the audience because many of them are wearing two hats now instead of one, so that we are maintaining within our adopted budget. So, thank you guys for your work in helping us to stay within our balance budget and putting money back into fund balance. Thank you.
Could I add something to that? I think that's a great example of keeping the control, local control. It's a good practice.
Yes, it is. Item 5B, update on House Bill 3, third grade.
Yes, at this time, Mr. Board President, Kristin Smith will be coming forward with the BNA, and will present an update on the House Bill 3, third grade, early literacy program, and some of our progress monitoring.
Good evening, President Tolliver, board members, Superintendent Smith Faulkner. Thank you for the opportunity to share this update on the third grade reading and extended constructed responses. I'll be discussing these two key areas, extended constructed responses and third grade reading tonight. Our work is guided by Goal 2, Performance Objective 1, which aims to increase the percentage of students meeting expectations on STAR reading from 36% to 40% by June 2026, combining Spanish and English together. When we look at this bar graph, we can make an apples-to-apples comparison, this year's benchmark to last year's benchmark. This year's benchmark was intentionally designed to mirror the STAR more closely by including enhanced item types such as Part A, Part B, and multi-select questions. Those additions in place, Benchmark 1 this year shows remarkable progress. We've seen an increase from 16% to 46% of students meeting expectations. Now, adding the end-of-year STAR performance helps us to know the starting point and where we set our target from last year. You can see that we've already exceeded our goal, and we're continuing to build on the In these first nine weeks, we've made significant instructional shifts in third grade reading. After a full year of training through our Texas Reads, Texas Leads grant, our team recognized the importance of extending structured literacy practices into third grade. This includes a complete redesign of instructional time shown here in blocks, aligned with the redesign of our campus master schedules and guiding documents. This enhancement is essential because it ensures that students continue to receive explicit systematic instruction in foundational skills such as decoding and fluency, tying a strong bridge from learning to read to reading to learn. It is important to highlight that all the decisions made were made in close collaboration with our elementary emergent bilingual coordinator to ensure that strategies and supports align with the needs of our bilingual learners. With this shift, we've already seen notable improvement in students' reading accuracy, confidence, and overall comprehension. confidence, and overall comprehension, which directly supports their success on more complex reading and writing tasks. This is a visual overview of the redesign of those instructional blocks. I'll go into more detail about each block on the following slides, but here you can see the key changes. Block one now includes structured literacy on vocabulary, reading comprehension, grammar, and writing. And block three is dedicated to personalized practice. This is where students work towards skill mastery and teachers provide small group instruction. Now we will dive into each block and provide clarity on the components and purpose. This is the structured literacy block, block one. We use the foundational skill lesson slides, the purple set in the upper corner, provide explicit systematic instruction and essential literacy skills such as phonological awareness, decoding, and high frequency words. Throughout the week, students engage in fluency practice, which helps improve reading accuracy, reading rate, and expression and intonation. There are examples of the fluency passages in the bottom corner. We also conduct fluency check-ins where students monitor their progress and reflect on their reading growth. And finally, students complete spelling pattern tests, which allow us to assess and ensure mastery of the phonics and decoding skills that were introduced in those foundational slides, the purple slides. To create a cohesive, structured approach that builds foundational skills and prepares students to confidently apply them in reading and writing tasks. Here is block two. Block two centers on vocabulary, reading comprehension, writing, and grammar. By grouping these components together, teachers can make stronger connections between reading and writing and reinforce grammar and language skills within meaningful contexts. Here is a picture of some overview less Q I M H M H. Block three is dedicated to personalized practice. One key component involves students working with weekly playlists. These are carefully curated with activities. These playlists target both word recognition and language comprehension and are built using our district-approved, high-quality instructional material resources. In the visual, you can see the word recognition activities are highlighted in yellow and the language comprehension activities are in blue. Additionally, the fluency practice included in these playlists bridges both the word recognition and the language comprehension that students move toward automaticity and greater reading independence. Another key component is AMIRA. It is our adaptive online program where students can self-select texts tailored to their individual needs, promunition, and engagement. AMIRA provides immediate, real-time support for challenging words and comprehension question uh, questions, reinforcing learning as students read. Its interactive comprehension questions encourage deeper thinking and a stronger understanding of the text, so it helps students apply those critical reading strategies independently. This slide highlights some additional artifacts that illiterated instructional changes. On the left, you can see a snippet of the guiding document, which clearly organizes each instructional block in an easy-to-read format. All the guiding documents are now updated with this format. Right, the tall columns show excerpts from the master schedules of each elementary campus. Each principal and administrative team worked diligently to ensure that the instructional blocks were as uninterrupted as possible. Additionally, campuses prioritize Block One by scheduling it at the start of the day when students are most focused and ready to learn that structured literacy instruction. Now let's shift to writing. Goal One, Performance Objective Twenty, aims to decrease the number of zeros on the extended constructed responses by ten percent. To decrease the number of zeros on extended constructed responses, we began with a focus of uh, strengthening the foundational writing through consistent work with a short constructed response first. Our first benchmark this year was designed to measure student progress on the short constructed response, which is the data you see here. We'll begin by examining the English data. In the white rows, you can see last year's Benchmark One results. At that time, sixty eight percent of English testers scored a zero, fifteen percent scored a one, and seventeen percent earned the full two points. In the blue row, you can see improvements in this year's Benchmark One results, highlighted with the green checks. The percentage of students earning the full two point and more students are scoring in the one range with twenty seven percent. The percentage of students scoring zero points has decreased from sixty eight percent to forty eight percent. This decrease in students earning zeros, along with more students earning one or two, reflects that more students are successfully earning points in writing. Moving to the gray row now, you can see our performance from STAR two thousand twenty five. Thirty five percent of students scored a zero, forty six percent scored a one, and nineteen percent earned two points. While there is still work to do in reducing the number of zeros, this early progress that our intentional focus on building the writing skills with the short constructed response is already leading to stronger overall writing performance than where we started from last
Good evening. They go one back one more. Thank you. This is the same data, but for our Spanish testers. In the white rows are last year's Benchmark One results. At that time, sixty two percent of Spanish testers scored a zero, twenty four percent scored a one, and fourteen percent earned the full two points. The blue row shows this year's Benchmark One results. The percentage of students earning the full two points has increased to thirty percent and more students are scoring in the one range with thirty three percent. The percentage of students scoring zero points has decreased significantly from sixty two percent to thirty seven percent. The green checks show that each area has improved from the previous year. While there was no S E R on the Spanish start last year, we understand the components of the S E R build a strong foundation towards the E C R. You can see them so far. As a reminder of what we are working toward, this is the STAR two thousand twenty five English and Spanish prompt. The English prompt was quite complex and required students to read a pair passage, one of which was a poem. To ensure our students are prepared to write at this level, we are making significant changes this year. As part of our efforts to strengthen writing instruction across the district, all writing teachers began the year with extensive professional development focused on building a clear understanding of expectations and effective instructional practices on the extended constructed response. A new set of explicit lessons has been developed for both short and answers. Each E C R lesson includes oral rehearsal and structured planning time to deepen students' thinking and help them stay on topic while responding to STAR-level prompts. Additionally, clear pacing for prompt analysis and planning ensures students fully understand what they are writing about before drafting, leading to more focused and effective responses. In addition to those lessons, daily editing and revising lessons are also included, recognizing that these skills make up a significant portion of the assessment and are essential for students' writing development.
These next slides are artifacts from the updates. So on this slide, at the top near the lion is a snip from the professional development on the E C R. In the chart below with the blue column, you can see the first four modules of writing with snips of the purpose of that module. In the top in the red and blue is a snip to represent that everything is provided in both languages. In the bottom right corner is an example of some writing lessons that are provided. These are examples of cold reads, which are passages students have not previously seen. These are completed in writable, and administering these cold reads ensures that students are evaluated on their independent writing abilities. Using writable also allows teachers to make meaningful connections between the platform's A I and the scoring engine used to score student writing on STAR, creating consistency in expectations and feedback. Here is a classroom example from the cold read. The student's writing was submitted in writable, where the teacher highlighted areas of focus. Editing is marked in pink and organizational revisions are in green. The teacher can also leave specific suggestions, which are shown in the black box. This targeted feedback allows the student to reflect on the guidance and then submit a revised draft, which is highlighted in light blue in that second.
These are artifacts for grammar, and were snipped from the daily grammar slides provided in the guiding documents. These images note the star alignment of passages and practice opportunities for students in both English and Spanish. For our dual-language program, we have also intentionally crafted bridge opportunities for students to make cross-linguistic connections between the skills learned.
Under Ms. Smith Faulkner's guidance, our bulletin boards have evolved into powerful tools for showcasing teaching and learning. These standards-based bulletin boards now serve as a window into the classroom, offering a clear view of what students are learning, how they are assessed, and how their work is connected to the standards. Each display includes several key components, the learning standard, a Q R code with materials related to the assignment, a scored rubric with criteria and performance levels, student exemplars, teacher feedback with glows and grows, and learning task descriptions. These bulletin boards not only celebrate student achievement, but they also make learning visible, connecting standards, instruction, and feedback in a clear and meaningful way. Um, here you can see an example of the third grade teachers at Joy James Academy of Leadership. This board showcases student writing exemplars, complete with rubrics, feedback, and Q R codes linked to the lesson resources. The bilingual teacher's display features both Spanish and English student writing, and this display offers a clear and authentic view of the learning that's happening in both classrooms. Here is a recap of the district-level efforts aimed at increasing the percentage of students meeting STAR expectations from thirty six percent to forty percent and reducing the number of zeros on the E C R by ten percent. We appreciate your time.
The detail that you provided in the presentation because it just, we can bring so much more to the table with understanding and getting to listen to you unpack it even further here. Um, so just incredible to see all that work and thank you for all the work that you're doing in that space.
Item five C.
Uh, yes, this time, uh, Mr. Board President, as uh, we know, another one of our areas of priority is our English One and English Two. And so we have Jennifer Garcia and um, yes, Darla Barnes, I was like Darla Barnes will be here to kind of give us an update on uh, where we are, I suppose, in particular at C H S. And then there was a question asked about um, some uh, data. And I asked Scott if he could clarify uh, the difference between district data, campus data, and snapshot data.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Superintendent Smith Faulkner, President Tolliver, and members of the board. Tonight we will be updating you on the District Improvement Plan Priority of English One and English Two. So Goal One of our District Improvement Plan focuses on transforming teaching and learning, specifically student achievement, teacher growth, and instructional pedagogy. Within this goal, Performance Objective Two establishes our target to increase the percentage of students achieving the MEAT standard on the STAR English One assessment from thirty three percent to forty percent by June of two thousand twenty six.
And so a question was called in because you'll notice on that red bar graph that we have thirty four percent when we established a baseline of thirty three percent. Um, so to take a little step back, um, in light blue, that is our Benchmark One from last year. In dark blue is Benchmark One from this year. That is a tier one benchmark really focused on our first teach for our um, students. That is only occurring at Castleberry High School. And so therefore, when we wanted to try to present the data in the most clean and even way, we pulled out only the STAR scores from the high school. And so that thirty four percent MEATs represents only C H S scores where the D I P is actually reach and C H S combined. So while there is a slight discrepancy, that is only because the, the benchmark data only represented C H S, and so we wanted to present STAR data to align and make sure we had that story completely. And so I'll turn it back over to Dr. Garcia to give a little bit more information of how they were able to achieve.
Well, thank you. As Scott mentioned, our data is up and we are pleased to report a four percent gain between last year and this year's Benchmark One, as seen in this graphic. We are also excited to be on track to meet this year's end-of-year goal. It's important to note that we began this year with seven new E L R teachers and support staff at the high school, three of whom are either new to the grade level or brand-new to the profession. This is a key consideration as we design curriculum and professional supports. As we continue to build teacher capacity and refine instructional pedagogy, we anticipate even more growth exceeding our student outcomes. To identify high-priority areas for intervention and support, we analyze performance across four major domains, our reading, revising, editing, and our extended constructed response, or E C R. From this view, we can see encouraging gains in several areas, but we want to ensure that we sustain and even accelerate this momentum. Notably, reading remains an area of focus as growth here is essential to meeting our overall goal. To support this, our curriculum work will prioritize strategies that strengthen reading comprehension and textual analysis. Because the E C R is tied directly to reading performance, we anticipate that improvement in comprehension will also yield growth in this, in writing. The next data set provides a closer look at the extended constructed response. Here we compare E C R results from the first benchmark of last year to this year. Teachers score these responses on a zero-to-five scale aligned to the state rubric. Our first celebration is that we have met our D I P goal of reducing the number of zeros from, by ten percent, as you can see here, from ten or forty to fifteen percent. Additionally, we see growth through the one through four score bands. We attribute this progress, at least in part, to the explicit modeling of prompt breakdowns and meta-cognitive writing strategies embedded in our curriculum documents.
For English Two, our Performance Objective Seven sets our goal to increase the percentage of students that score MEATs on STAR English Two tests from forty two percent to forty seven percent by June of two thousand twenty six. Again, this graphic is how our students began last two years. And as you can see, Benchmark One of the twenty four, twenty five school year shows that forty two percent of our students were able to achieve MEATs. In comparison to this year, we noted forty one percent of our students were able to achieve MEATs on that same measurement. There was a slight dip in the performance last year to this year, but as previously noted, looking with several early-career teachers whose content and pedagogical expertise are being supported through strategic curriculum and campus supports. It's also important to note that our English Two students, co-horted in the freshman year, actually scored at thirty six percent, and then they now are at forty one percent to show growth. Again, we view this data in four major components, reading, revising, editing, and the extended constructed response. This data shows us that our current English Two students struggle most in reading and the extended constructed response areas of the assessment. Through the curriculum and guided documents, we plan to focus on strategies and support for teachers in growing students' reading comprehension and analysis of text. And as mentioned previously, because the E C R is a response to reading, we anticipate growth in this area. As a campus, we have experienced high levels of apathy among our students resulting in zeros and blank submissions from students, which is shown in the data. We believe that this data is not a true indication of what our students' skills are, and as administrators, we've been going into classrooms and are having conversation with students about the importance of the extended construct. Here we can see the score breakdown for the extended constructor response for English Two. Zero score points remain the same. The score points for twos and threes did increase, and our score points for one, four, and five decreased. From a curriculum perspective, there is a need to work more directly with this group of teachers to ensure that we have strong, research-based instruction happening every day, including development of thesis statements and relevant text evidence and explanations that prepare them to meet the needs of the writing task. In response to this data, a code read E C R was conducted, and teachers are in the process of an E C R reflection through a deep-dive analysis to better understand student submissions and how to increase these scores by breaking down the prompt and selecting relevant text evidence.
Our English One and Two teachers participated in a full-day professional development session focused on internalization and planning. During this time, we examined the structure of the state exam, reviewed new item types, analyzed student expectations, and aligned these with our curriculum expectations. Teachers also engaged in a tech study connected to each unit's essential coming lessons. Following this session, I refined our guiding documents to incorporate additional examples of the new STAR item types, included a more robust guiding question set to support comprehension and increase rigor and alignment to the grade level teaks. Here is an artifact from both our curriculum and campus standpoints. Uh, you can see a snapshot from that full-day session. To ensure that teachers always have access to these materials, we've created a campus course that serves as a centralized repository. Within it, teachers can access curriculum. Within it, teachers can access curriculum documents, professional development materials, and the Data Dig resources, all in one place. This image shows the Google folder linked within Canvas where teachers can explore all the STAR-related documents reviewed during our professional learning day. As an example of the refinements made to the curriculum, the shot, the slide, sorry, shows the guiding comprehension questions from a single day's lessons. These are designed for teach-moment checks for understanding during reading. Next is an example of a new STAR item type that teachers now have access to for classroom These examples illustrate how we've embedded in-context revising and editing supports. The highlighted text excerpts align directly to weekly grammar mini-lessons, allowing students to see these skills both in and out of context. Research supports that students retain grammar skills more efficiently when they are taught in this dual format. By providing these examples directly within the guiding documents, we aim to save teachers' planning time and ensure consistent, high-quality instruction across all classrooms. This is a quick view of that Extended Constructed Response trends analysis from a recent cold read with our English 1 and 2 teams. We asked these teachers to capture the low, medium, and high trends across their most recent ECR data. Teachers identified the most common trends from each of these three buckets and began designing action plans based on their student need. Finally, this artifact highlights the learning experience that all secondary ELAR teachers received on the explicit modeling of a breakdown of the writing prompt to ensure that students understand the task. In that first image, you'll see we discussed some of the common writing deficiencies, some of the areas that our kiddos are struggling with. The second one, we talked about some of the common practices that we can enforce with all of our kids to help them overcome those, and then we practiced multiple ways of breaking down prompts with students so that they were very clear on how to do this before they ever got in front of students.
At the campus level, CHS has implemented actions to support both English 1 and English 2 goals. This includes PLCs, student-led conferences, data walks, and intentional coaching. PLCs focus on lesson internalization and offer targeted professional development to support student growth in the classroom. Student-led conferences empower our students to take ownership of their goals and for the steps needed to accomplish those goals. Data walks result in intentional observations and feedback that support teachers, and a culture of coaching builds collaboration while also growing the capacity of our teachers. There are multiple actions in place at CHS. PLCs are differentiated and very intentional to meet the needs of our teachers. And Ms. Reynolds are working in small groups with English 1 and English 2 teams to use data to drive instruction and strategies to support our students. PLCs are also intentionally planned based on the data walks. Data walks are continuously conducted and monitored to see implementation of strategies and curriculum. As such, teachers are given feedback and supports based on those observations. Campus and district leadership analyze the trends observed, and we provide targeted support in the, for the classrooms in those PLCs. In the first nine weeks, professional development to support both co-teaching and collaborative strategies in PLCs was conducted based on those observations. The intentional monitoring and support will continue throughout the school year. The English 1 and 2 teachers are also in the coaching cycle to build their capacity. The Instructional Coach, Haley Reynolds, is working with English teachers to support them in areas such as lesson framework, developing exemplars, and independent practices. This includes a continuous cycle of coaching, and here you can see some of the examples of a coaching plan and feedback that's given throughout the year. Another impactful action at CHS is that of student-led conferences. These were conducted to allow students the opportunity to present goals, progress, and discuss the important components a student needs to accomplish for graduation and their future goals. Teachers supported students in helping them develop goals, action steps, and reflecting on how to meet those future goals, and assisted them with developing the steps they needed to work toward those goals. Within these conferences, the students got to review their STAR scores and discuss the importance of passing those for graduation with their parents, discussing attendance and attending ACE tutorials to prepare them for these assessments. On October 27, students met with their parents and led these conferences at CHS. We are glad to present that 23 students present to their parents on that day. Through adjustments at both the district and campus level, we are making progress by working together to improve teaching and learning in English 1 and English 2. Teachers are using focused planning, teamwork, and coaching to help students grow. Students are learning to take ownership of their work through feedback and conferences. These efforts show our, one lesson at a time. At this time, we welcome any questions you have. Thank you.
On the student-led conferences, how was that received?
So, I mean, I'm in the hallways the whole time, and I was getting nothing but positive. Parents were like, they were like, this is eye-opening. I can't wait to hear more. Now I know how to get to this because they really saw their student getting into Skyward, getting into their true, like, what is my GPA? What are my courses? What am I going to do to get there? What are my STAR scores? You know, so getting all that information.
Very good. Thank you.
I want to share the same thing about the conferences. I'm sure it just is a great opportunity for the parents to hear from their students, but I think of all of the skills and dispositions they take away from being able to have the opportunity to have conversations about their academics and their learning, and I hope that that inspires them further to continue to do that. And I bet that's just incredible to get to walk through and see so many students and parents there and involved with it. You mentioned a lot about the intensive monitoring and support and the coaching, the continuous cycle, and it's evident, prior to that, you said there's a lot of pedagogical learning and support needed. So all that to share, it's this wraparound service and comprehensive support that obviously clearly goes a long way in making such impact.
And before we leave this item, I want to, you know, just commend you for the work that you've done, even with our early literacy, our third-grade literacy. This process started a year ago with our TXRL training, and the work that has been put in is tremendous. You can see we're very focused. It's aligned. What you're hearing in third grade writing is aligned all the way up through our 10th grade STAR, and there's been a lot of time and commitment into this process, and I know that we are definitely in the right direction for improving our ELA scores so that we can reach our ultimate goal that we want. So thank you to both of our presenters because it, they get up here and make it look easy, but it's been a lot of work, and thank you so much.
Now on to item 5D, new teacher incentive allotment.
Yes. At this time, Mr. Board President, we have Catherine Walker, our Director of Talent Acquisition and Development, and she'll, she's going to provide a recap of the teacher incentive allotment and some preliminary designations for the 25-26 school year.
Good evening, School Board President, School Board Members, Superintendent. Just as Ms. Smith-Faulkner said, I'm going to provide a brief update on our teacher incentive allotment this evening. Now, just as a reminder, the Teacher Incentive Allotment, or TIA, provides additional funding to our school district based on teacher performance. Teachers in selected assignments earn designations based on our local system that captures a year's worth of data to show teachers' effectiveness and impact on student growth. Our local designation team submits recommendations based on eligibility requirements, and once it's approved by the state, the designees generate funds for our school district. The district uses at least 90% of these generated funds to directly pay student-facing faculty and staff at the campus of the designation. So we're not actually keeping most of that. Most of that we're giving right back to our teachers. Now, last spring, oh, that's really tiny. Last spring, our first cohort of designees was accepted and approved by the state, generating almost $350,000 for Castleberry ISD, with 90% of those funds being allocated directly back to our teachers. So yay, that was awesome. Now, this first cohort that we had consisted of math and reading teachers, including special education inclusion teachers, in our STAR-tested grades, 3rd through 8th grade. For this year, we filed an expansion, and so we are now including 2nd grade teachers, 5th and 8th grade science teachers, English 1 and English 2, Algebra 1 and Algebra 2, geometry and biology teachers. So we had a lot bigger pool from which to find designees. Again, we're going to continue to expand, so we're doing data collection this year so that next fall, we can also include kindergarten and 1st grade teachers, 8th grade social studies, and US history teachers. Additionally, for this data collection year 25-26, we have adjusted our tools that we're using to collect our student growth measurement to more clearly align with the tools that we're already using for our assessments within our different departments and content areas. So this year, for this 2025 fall submission, we have submitted 30 teachers. 26 of those are new designations, and four of those are redesignations. Redesignations occur when we feel like somebody can move to a higher level and earn a higher percentage. So we have four of those, and we've submitted those to TEA, and they are under revision, are under review right now, and we're just basically waiting for their final acceptance. Part of, once they've accepted that, part of the process is to pay a $500 per teacher fee to TEA, which will be reimbursed in September of the following school year. We will continue the same way that we did this past school year, that those designees, once approved by Texas Tech and TEA, will know that in late February, be able to honor those teachers, and give them their allotment before August 1 of 2026. Now, there was also a question that was called in about strategic compensation, which kind of is, aligns a little bit with the TIA. The next steps in strategic compensation are reviewing the principal scorecards with the principals, and that's kind of where we are on, in that process. And that's pretty much all I have. I'm pretty short and sweet tonight.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, on to item 5E, Castleberry High School Bond Program Construction Update.
Yes. At this time, Mr. Board President, we have Cameron Holloman, our Bond Program Manager. He will present a construction update on the 24 Castleberry High School Bond Program.
Thank you, Superintendent Ms. Smith-Faulkner, Board Members, Board President. I'm going to stay with the same theme and keep it short and sweet, especially since you all have gotten to see a little bit of the action this last month. So we're going to go through some of those, and I'll get more detailed with some of the pictures on things that have taken place since then. So again, strategic plan, we're staying on pace. We're definitely within budget, which Mr. Rooton enjoys, but we are also on schedule, and to date, we've stayed in compliance and no major safety concerns at this time. As far as an overall project, infrastructure-wise, we're doing good. We finally got the stormwater completely connected underground now. That is going to alleviate, obviously, some of the stormwater, but in areas where we have flatwork coming in, it's not going to alleviate everything. And then around the building, we'll have sidewalks and flatwork going in that will help further that cause later down the road. Renovation-wise, looking good. You got to see the band hall, and for those, personally, that's what I do this far, is to see the looks and appreciate the fact that those seniors got to lift the beam and then a week later got to go into that room. And I watched them two by two come into that little gooseneck from outside, and, you know, to see that expression over and over again for about three minutes was amazing. So appreciate that part of the job, for sure. As far as new construction, we're completed with our pier and beam, so for the most part, our underground is done. We're working on the student parking lot. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but overall, doing good as far as timeline, some of the ones that we reached. You guys have been a part of some of these. I'll show you a few photos of what's taken place since then, but our, we are completely connected now, so you don't have to go down or up the stairs. You can walk completely through the entire job site from one end of the building to the next, so that's good. And then moving forward, I'll show you some of the milestones that we hope to hit over the holiday season in January. Again, for Mr. Rooton's sake, we're going to show how we're hitting our stride here financially, and this is probably the most important part of our task. And I know Superintendent Smith-Faulkner and William and I stay on this every week or two, making sure the flow. One thing I'll say is, you know, it's a two-week process from the time we get invoice to my review, sitting down with Ms. Smith-Faulkner. She takes the time to make sure that we've got everything in place, and then sending it through to William to review. So it is a two-week process. We do a great job of that, and we are staying on pace. So just briefly, we're about 40% through the project. We've paid about 30% out now. I'll say we had a $3 million bill come through, 3 million plus this last week. So we've completely played, paid all of our invoices, and yet we're still a little ahead of schedule there. And then as far as soft costs, I commend Mr. Lasher for staying on top of that. We've still got quite a bit of that left to seek some opportunities moving forward. Here are some photos. This is Area C, so just since you guys have been there, we've completed the exterior windows, all of that vapor barrier, moisture-proofing on the outside, and then there you see the connector. That's from the inside looking out. And then over to the next Area B, this is just to illustrate that we're actually already completing roofing. So here's some rough in, and these are our curbs, and we're ready to drop units on actually the new portions of the building, not just the area that we're renovating. So these guys are doing a heck of a job. I took this picture earlier this morning just to showcase, you know, two weeks before you guys got to lift that beam, well, the entire district, I should say, that we didn't even have structural steel in that area. So they did a good job of getting ready for that event that we had already scheduled, but this is just a showcase. So if I can point right up into this area where the beam is, that is the only area left that we do not have decking over the project. So by the end of this week, from a drone, we will no longer get to see inside the buildings. It'll be completely covered. So that's all good news, and we're right on track. I took this photo also, this is right there at Area B around the storm shelter, so this is what we've called the spine. This is the last slab that will pour for all of the project on the new area. Now, we'll have flatwork around the buildings, but slab on grade and slab on second deck, this will complete that process and that's scheduled for this week. So more good news. This is just a photo to show you, just since you guys were there, we're already putting up sheet rock. This is the window area where people will pass on that, that second floor area and can see into the CTE area. So pretty cool to see all that come together. And throughout these photos, you'll notice that we have a lot of the straps coming down for all of our piping, all of our ducting. I mean, they're really doing a good job. I also want to take a second to commend Mr. Bowser as well. He does so much behind the scenes that make us all, I'll speak for everybody, look really good, and he's staying on pace with the renovation. And anybody that can stay up to speed with BTC, specifically Israel, but he does a lot, and that's challenging because those subs are there to get in, get paid, and get out. That's the only way they make money. And so for Jacob to work the contracts, deal with me, and stay on pace and ahead of them, I commend him, but he's got a lot of that low voltage already in the renovation area. So just looking ahead, we want to complete that parking lot. Why I posted this to you guys is because that will mean we're going to eventually get to relocate that job trailer, so all that mud and traffic on White Settlement Road will be alleviated to the back portion back there, so, and we own a portion of that street, so that will help a lot with the construction traffic. We hope to be dried in by February 1, so, and I said that a year ago, I couldn't believe I was saying it out loud when I said it a year ago, but we're on pace to do that. And then we want to stay diligent with our budget, so now- So now's the time that we're above ground, will be dried in. Ms. Smith Faulkner has done a good job of staying on task with me to seek opportunities now as we see we have funds available. And while we have subs on the project, save a lot of money on, you know, keeping them there to do a little bit of extra work. So everything good so far, so good. So we got about a year left, and I'm looking forward to a healthy project moving forward. Any questions? Okay.
Wait, we have a big one to add to that you forgot. We recruited somebody. I think Ms. Trambler has, Ms. Trambler has a brand-new PK student, and we actually recruited our student from Israel. He liked our school so much, he's bringing her daughter from another school district to Cassavere. So just enrolled. Dog's crying, right?
Yes.
Yes.
A lot of quality time, father and daughter. And he talked about how she couldn't talk enough about it on the way home that first day. So that was, that was special.
That's great.
Only a couple of hundred more, and we'll be moving forward. William will love the budget. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Item 6. At this time, the board will retire to closed session under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 through 551.076 and 551.08 through 551.083 to discuss the items listed on the agenda. The time is 7:12 PM. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item 7C, Campus Recognition of My Joy James Academy, where I went to school.
All right. Well, Mr. Board President, at this time, the Joy James Academy of Leadership Students will recognize students and staff who are en route to destination success.
Good evening, Board Presidents, Superintendent Ms. Smith Faulkner and Board Members. Tonight, we would like to take this opportunity to share with you how Joy James Academy of Leadership is soaring to success. Now, sit back and relax and let us show you what some of our success at Joy James looks like this year. At JJA, we believe everybody can be a leader. This year, we have had a large group of students stand out as leaders who use their art to influence and inspire others. The, hang on. We have had students place and even win cash money for the Fort Worth Stock Show and Rodeo Art Contest, the Trinity River Authority Art Contest and the Red Ribbon Week poster contest. We're not done yet, but there are a lot of competi, there are still more competitions on the horizon. This group, along with every other student at JJA, are blessed with an amazing art teacher, Ms. Rocha. Ms. Rocha, would you please join me at the podium? She has worked tirelessly to help students use their unique gifts and talents to show that everyone has genius. These students has, have demonstrated genius throughout their amazing art this year. Let's give a round of applause to Ms. Rocha.
While developing genius students demonstrate a habit three, put first thing first. This student spent time working hard in the art room, analyzing their projects and meeting their deadlines. That commitment and focus on their goal helped them sort this to success.
Throughout this hard work, combined with their talents, passion and purpose, these students have successfully accomplished the ultimate goal we have for students at JJA, find your voice.
While our students have found major success this year, there are two more adults that we would like to recognize for being a major part of JJA's success. Ms. Chavaria and Ms. Guzman have both become a major part of our school. Will you both come up to the podium, please?
They truly demonstrate habit six, synergize, together is always better. Ms. Chavaria helps us guide us, helps guide us to success by always being a team leader and stepping in to help wherever help is needed. Her positive attitude is greatly appreciated, and her willingness is appreciated by JJA students and staff members. Ms. Guzman helps us guide us to success by ensuring our second grade students gets lots of practice with their Just Fried readers in ACE after school. Before, she also helps our second grade students on Hispanic Heritage Research Project during ACE. She arrives early to ensure all A students have the materials they need to be successful in our after-school program. Please join me in recognizing Ms. Chavaria and Ms. Guzman.
We would now like to recognize the students who have showed how JJA's destination is always success. This group of students have placed in Fort Worth Stock Show and rodeo art competition and the Trinity River Authority Art Contest. When I call your name, please stand and remain standing. Please hold your applause until all the students have been recognized. Makayla Barrios, Gabriel Canales, Naomi Chaparro, Elena Chavez, Genesis Chavez, Fabian Fradrera, Jacqueline Gonzalez, Katherine Ivada, Camila Juarez, Fernanda Luna, and Alia Mata, Arvaya Mata, Oscar Mauricio, Lena, Natalie Motejano, Elena Morin, Daniel Murillo, Andres Nava, Isabella Navas, Katherine Rocha, Daniel Roldan, Floriana Salazar, Geraldine Sanchez, Mia Segundo, Jose Vazquez and Isabel Aventura. Let's give all these students a round of applause. Thank you again for allowing us to showcase how JJA is soaring to success this year.
And we could not do it without our parents of these children. So, parents, would you please stand up to be recognized as well? Thank you. So, Mr. President, I just have to say something. Someone told how good they thought some of our earlier presentations were, but I'm, I don't know. I think the student presentations were probably the best tonight. Good job, guys. Give yourself applause.
We're gonna take a few minutes. We're gonna take some pictures. Ms. Branch will take our picture. But we want to, yeah, she'll direct our pictures. Thank you.
We're going to move on now to item 7D. Kelly James.
Yes, Mr. Board President. Our social studies coordinator, Ms. Kelly James, will recognize the veterans present at the board meeting and share how veterans are being recognized at all the campuses.
Good evening, President Oliver and Superintendent. Ms. Gollman and School Board Chairman, good afternoon. To share with you the activities we will be doing tomorrow to honor our veterans. Tomorrow, at 11:11, our students will acknowledge our veterans with a moment of silence. This date and time signifies that at the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, World War I ended. At AVKado, their kindergarteners are learning about veterans and how they are the fourth grade. They will interview Sergeant Jaime Uvareski, a veteran sibling of AVKado's own teacher, Ruth Uvareski, and write about what they learned during the Zoom interview. In music, at CE, students learn songs that are about pride in America. During social studies, our classes, their classes, research the origin and importance of Veterans Day. Announcements will highlight heroic stories of veterans from World War I and World War II. CE will honor our community members by creating a board of honor so students can recognize all those in our community that have served. One of those being recognized will be the father of CE's own Mr. Gideon, who served as a paratrooper in the United States Army. Third and fourth graders at Joy James Academy of Leadership will perform a music program to celebrate Veterans Day on Tuesday evening. They have invited members of the community to be recognized during the program. During the school day, habit huddles in each homeroom will focus on honoring our veterans. All Irma Marsh students will view the ceremony of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier and discuss the service of veterans through their social studies classes. Irma Marsh created a wall of honor to acknowledge all those who served. Students will also read the names of the veterans who worked at Irma Marsh over the morning announcements and provide special treats for the veterans. Their CBI students are creating thank you cards. CHS Student Council are honoring our veterans with the catered lunch from our own Lion Dash. Students are also creating cards for those veterans who teach at CHS, and there will be morning announcements for Veterans Day. All students will discuss what it means to be a veteran during their social studies All REACH students will listen to Sergeant Edgar Pena, a current CISD employee, speak about his service and experiences in the United States Marine Corps. Over 16 staff members served across the Air Force, Army, Marines, and Navy. You will see the names listed in a moment as we recognize each branch of the military. If you are a staff or community member in the audience who served, please stand when your branch is acknowledged. CISD employees and any others in the audience who served in the Air Force, please stand. CISD employees and any other in the audience who served in the Army, please stand. CISD employees and any other in the audience who served in the Marine Corps, please stand. CISD employees and any others in the Navy who served, audience, who served in the Navy, If there are any members of the audience who served in the Coast Guard, please stand. Thank you for your service and your sacrifice. It has been our pleasure to honor you all tonight. After recognitions are complete, we will invite all veterans to the front of the boarding room for a photo. Thank you.
We're going to take, yeah, we're going to take one last photo and then you guys can stay for the rest of the meeting or. Y'all ready?
Yes, sir.
We're going to move on to item 8A, the Finance Monthly Update.
Right, good evening, Mr. President, Board of Education and Superintendent. Sorry about that. I actually thought everybody was going to stay. They didn't. Thank you for allowing us to present the budget as of October 20th of this previous month. Today's discussion points, here's a quick overview of what we'll cover. First, we'll begin with the budget snapshot to show where we stand as actual collections, actual expenses, and net change and fund balance. And next, we'll talk about the financial performance, where we will compare if collections are spending is on track. If we collected more than what we spend and vice versa. And then finally, we'll discuss the next steps to keep the budget aligned with current year budget expectations. Next slide is the budget snapshot. This slide pretty much indicates that we adopted a $48.6 million budget. To date, we've actually collected about $3.6 million, which is 28% of our adopted budget. We've spent $11.3 million, and our net change and fund balance is 2.3, which is a positive trend. So the fund balance is trending in the positive direction. Next slide. So this slide is very important. I hit it, I talked about it last month, but what I'm trying to just say here and keep focused at, the district expects about $37.2 million in state funding. State funding is roughly about 77% of our budget, and how do we get the most out of state funding? Eighty-eight average daily attendance. So far, the district has collected about $13.4 million in state funding. So basically, more students coming to school equates to more funding. So, next slide. Here's a big picture of year-to-year comparison. What I want to focus on, total expenses. If we could compare the actual spend as of October to previous year October, we spent about $95,000 less. As you see in instruction, increased slightly, and I attribute that to house bill too, and then instruction support and general administration and district operations spending has been reduced. As you see, so last October to this October, you'll start seeing the gap in spending less and less. You know, it's because our plan is, superintendent plan has been working, and we're going to continue to do that plan and make sure that we control spending, but not sacrifice student academic performance. Right, next slide. So October, we're going to do the same thing in November, and we're going to add on, as tonight we present the 24-25 audit. As the audit said, we had planned on submitting the audit to TA this month because for all of the 1,100 school districts that's out there, TA has delayed the submission of the audit, and that's simply because of the, I call it a single audit template that they're working on. And so the deadline to get that done, TA should be done with their, with their single audit template by January of next year. So December is important because I'm going to be preparing the mid-year budget update. We're going to do forecasting and see exactly, this is where we stand as of December. I am going to project the best, with the best information I have, to see where we're going to land in next June. Now, if something comes up, AC breaks or something that's out of our control, then that's a discussion that we'll, we'll pretty much talk to superintendent about and make our recommendations through her. With that being said, pending any questions from this board, Mr. President, that's all we have for the month of October.
At this time, we will consider the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Please indicate your vote. Motion carries for zero. Now on to item 10, the action items. 10A, consider approval of the 2024-2025 Annual Financial Audit Report. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 Annual Financial Audit Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please indicate your vote. Motion carries for zero. Item 10B, consider approval of the HVAC portable units at Casper High School not to exceed the amount of $60,000. Is there a motion? Any discussion?
I move to approve the HVAC portable units at Casper High School as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question. I was going back, and I see it says rentals. So is this the first time we've done this?
No, ma'am. So in the process of the renovation at the high school, we used and lost the chiller in the basement when we were going through the renovation. So with that being said, is, we had the option of renting a HVAC chiller system versus getting the individual unit. So we have eight classrooms in the basement, and we knew we wouldn't need it over the month of July or June. So we actually are renting these portables from, excuse me, from August to March. So we were so close to that $50,000 threshold that we wanted to bring it to you because there could be a chance in the spring that we would have to get it in different areas. So no, this is not something new. We know we're going to turn that area over to BTC in May so they can start that project. So we thought this was the best and most cost-effective way to get throughout the year without having to rent a, probably about a 35, 40-ton chiller to get through to Peace Millers thru.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Please indicate your vote. Motion carries for zero. Item 10C, consider approval of the Casper ISD library books to be purchased or donated. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the list of library books to be purchased or donated as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please indicate your vote. Motion carries for zero. Item 10D, consider allocating votes for appointment on the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. Do we need to discuss who those votes go before?
Mr. President, I'd like to suggest that we split the votes between Wendy and Eric. It's just a suggestion.
Any other discussion? Any other? Split the votes?
We have six.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm just curious of discussion, if we wanted to know if we have any recommendations that came to us at all.
There was some information in the presentation, just background, things like that.
More about them.
Anything additional?
That's good for me. Is there a motion? You'll need to separate that in the motion.
I move to approve the resolution allocating votes for appointment on the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors, splitting the votes three and three for Eric and then Wendy.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Please indicate, please indicate your vote. Motion carries for zero. Sure.
Yes, and I know that Ms. Burgess is here, stayed here for the vote, and I would like to thank you for all the help that, with the district and with our struggle when we were worried about if we were going to fail our property value study test. I know that you were there with us, so thank you.
Now on to item 11, information items. There was a question called in about item 11H, the Casper ISD Board of Education may There was a question called in about can we switch election dates? There's an email that I'll ask Angela to forward if she hasn't forwarded on to everybody, basically stating we can't.
Is that separate from what was already in board book? That looks the same. Is there something different? Okay, so it's in board book.
12 for 12? I didn't see anything we needed to highlight. Discussion items, 12A, key dates. Got some stuff coming up, including a playoff game. It's probably the closest thing coming. Out at Birdville? Birdville Stadium?
Yes, and I'm thinking it is Decatur. Okay, finalize.
See, I don't know. Let me make this better. Zoom that in. Got the Veterans Day programs going on tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the thing, the musical too.
Mm-hmm. That's tomorrow night?
Yeah.
The CHS Theater.
I want to go there.
You're going to be there?
Yeah, I want to go.
Okay.
Been waiting to go see it.
Well, there's a theater item also.
It's also on Saturday.
Saturday, yeah. I want to try to go to.
I either go tomorrow or Saturday.
AVKado's, that's next week. And are we doing our Board Christmas Dinner is on the 8th of December? That's before we meet, right? Yeah, that's before our next boarding. So just a reminder, we're having our, oh, there's a winter concert party that's tonight. The Board Christmas Dinner, December the 8th. So a lot of them.
It's Mrs. Christmas's concert.
Oh, is it? Well.
We're all having a breakfast.
Yeah.
Have a good weekend.
All right. Anything else anybody wants to highlight? 12.
I think Family Code Night, we have put it out on Parent Pass, and so we invite our community and our students and also others in the community to come. And so that is, I know they're gearing up for a big event on that, partnered with ACE. And so that's always, has a lot of students and parents that are engaged in that, so I would encourage anyone to attend that.
For 12D, since I wasn't here for the last meeting due to continued work travel, I was curious if there was discussion that was had that, we just wanted to have continued discussion or?
Not yet, but we did talk about Christmas dinner. We talked about Christmas dinner, we were there. I was looking at key dates when I talked about Christmas dinner. It's fine. There's only four of us here.
The longevity checks? Yeah.
Writing a letter?
Yes, I need to know, do you want us to share the same letter?
Sure.
Okay.
It's slightly different from last year.
Change the names.
Yeah.
It's the one that Mr. Holder.
Yeah.
The one that Mr. Holder wrote, okay.
I really don't recall there being discussion about 12D last time. It was just going to be on this agenda, right? Like, there was, there was a discussion, we just, we just talked.
I will say that some advice from our attorney on 12D is that instead of board operating procedures, that this would probably need to be considered for a local policy versus just an operating procedures. If you're if, if the language is kept. So his suggestion was probably it's a better fit for local policy.
Okay.
Well, let's just table that.
Until we have more people?
Well, until we can do it right.
Okay. What do you mean do it right?
Just if we need to vote on changing something.
Oh, no, right now it's just discussion though, we're not voting.
I mean, we'd have discussion, sure.
Yeah, no, I was just curious what, I guess, opinions were about, because it seemed that it's possible action. So I don't know, like, what was the discussion? Possible removal, possible updating?
It was just about, from what I recall, I just remember that someone said, I believe Tracy said, well, life happens, any emergencies happen, and that was pretty much all the discussion. We didn't really discuss it.
I think it was brought up because.
Of the travel.
Of the travel. On the travels where it's listed, you know, you're expected to be here at least 80% of the meetings in order for taxpayers to be paying for your travel.
Yeah.
So that's why it's sometimes.
So it's just being brought up though for possible, like, reconsideration, or we're editing the percentage? Or like, what's happening with this?
If I remember correctly, I think it was a reminder, we were getting ready to budget. Angela needed to put in, I think, the latest travel, and so it was just a reminder to be sure that where, that everyone was aware before she put in the travel for the national convention? Yes. So I, after that, I'm not sure what happened.
I'm hesitant to speak because Ms. Galman wouldn't hear. When that was brought up, Ms. Galman asked for this to be here, and unfortunately, she can't be here tonight. So she asked for something to be in there that maybe we could adjust it, change it, something like that.
Okay.
So, but she's not, really not here, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, the context is helpful. Just, I will say, because I know that likely is going to affect me, I wanted to know whether I should start seeking outside funding and support, or if we're going to discuss, if we're open to discussing it.
Yeah, I was, yeah, we were open discussing.
I think there was two that are not within the 80%.
Yeah. I've still got the numbers.
Okay, so it sounds like we're open to discussing to possibly the remove or update that.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no green light on I need to start seeking funding. I will, trust me. I will seek funding when I need to. Okay, thank you. So we'll discuss, I guess, do we need a note now tabling that to move it over?
We'll table it for the next meeting.
Tabling, yes.
Yeah.
Actually, no action. We had some discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
We had a discussion, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Again, there was item 12E, a discussion about incorporating Latin curriculum. I'm going to table that also, because the person who brought that up unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight, so. be with us tonight, so.
12F, right?
12F, sorry. Yeah, 12, 12D, 12E, and the 12F were a discussion item that somebody unfortunately isn't here. So. Let's see. Anything item, anything else on there anybody wants to touch on?
Think over the assignments for, um, January?
Yes. Does that work for everybody?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll put that we're tabling those for.
Yes. All right, any discussions, updates, uh, missing? All right. Well, I'm gonna move on to item 13A, but before I do, I wanna, I've been informed that there's some other school board members from another district here. I wanna thank them for trudging through our meeting, and thank you for your service. And at that note, uh, our, I will establish our next meeting at Monday, December 15th, 2025, and I move we adjourn. Hearing no objection, we stand adjourned at, oh, my glasses are messy. 8:15, 8:14.